And we will start with item one on the agenda, proposed Curry mixed-use development revisions. Mr. Green?
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, Rick Green, Development Services Director. What I'd like to do today is talk to you a little bit about our Curry mixed-use district proposed changes, talk about our building sub-districts, have a quick discussion on current conditions and recent land acquisitions, and then get into some of the proposed zoning amendments that we'll be looking into, the building sub-districts, building height and building incentives in particular, talk a little bit about Northwood Road, and then seek some direction from you on a particular set of items that I'll save for the end. So just to familiarize yourself with the Curry mixed-use district, it's bounded in the area outlined in blue, roughly 27th Street to the north, Pine Street to the south, North Dixie Highway on the west, and Flagler Drive to the east. You've got the Curry Park to the east. Again, we are working on plans with CRA to redevelop that park. To the north, you've got the La Fontana condominiums, 10 stories in height, 145 units, and then right next to that, the Portofino condominiums, also 10 stories at 126 units. These were built in 61 and 68 respectively. So I'm not going to go through the entire history, but suffice to say that back in 2014, we had a very lengthy seven-day public visioning workshop with residents, and what emanated out of all of that discussion were meetings with both the planning board, with the CRA, culminating in the adoption of Ordinance 4528-14, which was an amendment to our zoning code. And what those amendments did was create three building sub-districts. So the edge sub-district is relegated to the northwest corner of the C-Mud District with building heights of three to four stories. You had the transition district outlined in blue with buildings of six to 12 stories. And then lastly, you had the core district outlined in red, which allowed buildings between eight and 15 stories. So again, looking at the typologies, you had three and four stories as they transitioned to the single-family neighborhoods to the northwest. You had six stories along North Dixie Highway, 10 stories by the condos I referenced earlier, 12 stories as you started to come into the core of the district, and then the core itself was 15 stories. I outlined this area in black because this is an existing PUD that never moved forward. Again, we're considering that part of the core district as well. So the way the amendments were laid out back in 2014 is you start with a base height, and if certain height bonuses were met, or conditions were met, you could increase the height. And some of the incentives that we offered were lead certification, public parking for Curry Park, the construction of a supermarket, green roofs, public open spaces, and building vistas. By our calculations, the entire district could accommodate about 4,000 residential units and just over 2.3 million square feet of non-residential or retail commercial. So this is what the C-Mud District looks like today, as the commission is well aware. A lot of vacant properties, not a whole lot of development there. Again, you've got your boundaries, north and south. We are also working simultaneously on amendments to the N-Mud and the B-Mud districts. We are working with CRA on the establishment of an anchor site development to the west of Northwood Road. Our intention is to extend Northwood Road into the C-Mud District. That would be our goal, our desire. Again, as I mentioned earlier, Curry Park, we're working on plans for the redevelopment. And then again, you've got the two condos to the north, La Fontana and Portofino. The only development that we've really seen in recent years is the Neil Kosikoff 312 Northwood development, consisting of just over 100 apartments at this location. As the commission is aware, the developer, Jeff Green, has begun to acquire a great deal of properties in the C-Mud District. These are the listing of about 29 properties that he has acquired. When you see it in context to the entire district, again, the total properties have a value of just under $35 million per papa. The real value certainly is a lot higher. These properties were acquired between August of 2012 and June of 2016. They account for more than 50% of the total C-Mud area. And again, Mr. Green has retained the services of Herzog and De Meuron, one of the most prestigious architectural firms in the country. This is a sampling of some of the work they've done worldwide, and they are proposing to develop in this area as well. These are two renderings that they have showed staff and the public before of buildings they are interested in building in this district. So we've been working with John Schmidt, who's in the audience right now, and his staff on proposed C-Mud zoning revisions to what was adopted back in 2014. And some of the things we've been discussing are including a fourth building sub-district. We've been addressing the building height issue, incentives, again, Northwood Road setbacks. So I want to really focus on the items at the top here. And a lot of this detail, we still have to work out, but we're seeking direction with the commission on certain items. So again, as a reminder, this is what was adopted in 2014, an edge district, a transition, and a core. What we are discussing now is the maintenance, or maintaining the edge sub-district, keeping the transition district, but then splitting the core district into two districts, a Core One and a Core Two. The Core Two, as outlined here, would have a little less height. The Core One would have the larger heights, ranging eight stories up to 30 to 38, and that's one of the things we'll discuss. And let me go back to that. So one of the areas that we'd like to discuss is in the transition area behind the two condos. There's an area that Jeff Green and John Schmidt's team are proposing be designated as Core One. Staff believes that it's better to keep that as a transition district. And again, just a reminder that 4,000 residential units could be built and 2.3 million square feet of non-residential. The other area that we'd like to discuss is this area, which is reflected in their proposal as a Core Two. Staff thinks that all of the properties from this point south along Flagler Drive should be designated as Core One. So these are the only two areas where we're not in agreement with what the applicant is proposing. So again, to recap, again, you've got three sub-districts under the current code. The C-Mud is being split into two different sub-districts, a Core One and a Core Two, and this is what staff's proposal would be as we move forward through the zoning amendment process.
Mr. Green, before you move off of that slide, what is the rationale that's been articulated for dividing the core into Core One and Core Two? And what is staff's, what's the basis of staff's objection?
I think it's a further transition, Mayor. You have a little less height in the Core Two District. I'm only suspecting I haven't spoken to Mr. Green about this site, but certainly he's desirous of going to a 38-story height here. My guess would be that he wants to get above the 10-story buildings that you have here. Our concern is, again, you've got an edge district of three and four stories here to do with 38 building here, 38-story building here adjacent to three and four, which transitions into the single-family neighborhood. It's a little bit of a concern, so we would like to leave that as a transition district. The Core One properties that were referenced, again, are all owned by Jeff Green as well. So every one of these that you see designated in red here are owned by Mr. Green. So again, we don't think, this area needs to be Core One, and we'd like to add some property here that he does not own that's adjacent to Flagler Drive as a Core One. But it's really a further transition when you go from three and four here, six along North Dixie Highway, transition to 15 stories, and then ultimately to a height greater than 15, whether it's 30 or 38. It's part of the discussion I'd like to have today.
Thank you.
So again, this is the proposal. We would like to keep this portion of 26th to 7th Street west of Flagler as a transition. The area outlined in red here, again, is moving from the core original district to the Core One. And then lastly, the Core Two property that was proposed by the applicant that we're working with, we would like to keep that or move that to a Core One. So this whole corridor becomes all red and part of the Core One District. So building height, again, with the heights that you, we are proposing with the four sub-districts, you've got an edge, which is three and four stories, a transition, which ranges with incentives from six to 12, the Core Two, eight to 15, and then the Core One, we are suggesting that that be capped at a height of 30. Mr. Green's team is recommending that that go as high as 38 stories. And again, the intent is that you would start with a base, and then with incentives, you would work your way up to that cap, again, in whatever district it might be. So the two areas where there's a little bit of a conflict is in the one area that we're showing as the transition, and then secondly, the area along Flagler Drive that is not owned by Mr. Green, that we think should be a core as well, and then transition downward or southward. With regard to building height, when you look at the building heights downtown, the Trump Plaza, which was built in the mid-'80s, has a height of 32 stories. The One West Palm Project has a height of 30 stories, 404 feet to the roof. And everything else you see is under, under the 30-story height. The Tent Site that Mr. Cohen is working on right now is capped at 25 stories. The Bristol was at 23, I'm sorry, 22. Esperante, Waterview, North Bridge, all at 21. Two-City Plaza and City Place Tower is at 20 stories. When you go further north to the Raibovich Related Project, again, this was a six-tower configuration approved several years ago by the commission. The first two towers, called Marina Village, are in for permit right now. Hopefully, they'll start construction soon. But these buildings were capped between 25 and 30 stories. So what Mr. Green is proposing is a combination of height, with the biggest height being 38 stories, and what we call the bookend. So it starts taller on the ends, and as you work toward the middle, the buildings become a little less. And again, our feeling is the tallest building should probably be downtown, so we'd like to cap that at 30 stories. So this is staff's recommendation. So as I mentioned earlier, our goal, our desire, is to use the existing C-Mud heights and then create a series of incentives that would allow the applicant to reach the desired height. Again, our feeling is we'd rather see the taller buildings in the middle, but again, under this configuration, this would all be Core One. The maximum height with incentives, we are recommending be 30 stories. What that would allow for is 29 stories with a floor-to-ceiling height of 12 and 1/2 feet, plus 40 feet for the first floor. That would allow a height of 403 feet, which again, is pretty high, pretty tall. And then again, we prefer to see the taller structures in the center of C-Mud and transitioning to the smaller heights as you move north and south. So with regard to building incentives, again, this is what was adopted back in 2014. These were some of the incentives that we offered as part of the amendment that we are working on now. We'd like to change the lead certification to just a gold or platinum. It's becoming almost the building standard now to do lead certification. So the silver and the basic lead, we'd like to eliminate and offer incentives for just gold and platinum. We would like to retain the public parking incentive for Curry Park. As the commission is aware, that's a problem, particularly for the boaters who want to use the ramp, and we've had discussions with Mr. Green about possibly providing parking off-site outside of Curry Park. We would like to retain the supermarket incentive, the green roofs, we think, again, tied to lead certification, probably not necessary. Public open spaces, we would like to retain. And then the building vistas, we'd like to eliminate as well. But what we would like to do is, again, create new incentives for the extension of Northwood Road to help CRA with the funding of that extension. As the commission is aware, we did a workshop a couple weeks ago on workforce housing. We'd like to extend that incentive to this district as well. Help pay for improvements to Curry Park. What the CRA will work on, we use the analogy of doing a base plan, and then maybe incentives could be provided to further enhance the improvements to Curry Park. And then again, like we did with the Okeechobee Business District, we'd like to create some mobility options that could serve as incentives, whether that means bringing a trolley to the Curry mixed-use district, or some other incentives that would reduce the reliance on automobiles. So we would like to continue to work on these with the applicant and staff.
Mr. Green, hold on. We have a question from Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Green. Just a couple of questions on incentives. The extension of Northwood Road has long been a discussion with the Curry corridor, and I think some of the concerns from neighbors are that that extension will be done first, potentially development wouldn't happen in the future, and then we would just have an extended corridor that allows elements that are not wanted in the community an easier access. So in crafting these incentives, would we be able to put in some sort of stipulation of the timing of the extension of Northwood Road? Certainly, it's welcome, just the timing is important.
Certainly, we could do that. We could make that tied to the incentive. So if that's the desire of the commission, certainly, we could ward the incentive in that fashion, absolutely.
Thank you. And then the second question was, in the improvements to Curry Park, I just want to specify, because we're right now under a really great and cute community engagement effort. So in the incentives for improvements to Curry Park, those would be financial improvements that were already predetermined by the community. Whoever is doing developing within this corridor is not going to be the one that determines the improvements. It would be a funding mechanism, correct?
It could either be a funding mechanism, or it could be an enhancement to what is approved, but that certainly would, that decision would rest with the city commission. So let's say hypothetically, you've got a, I don't want to use the term "basic plan", but you have a plan for Curry Park, and then let's say through the discussion of these incentives, a marina is proposed, or a restaurant that wasn't part of the original plan. We would bring that incentive back to the city commission and say, is this something you would like to see in Curry Park? We can engage the residents again. If that was something they wanted to do, then we would tie that financially to either a developer making that improvement himself, or providing the financial commitment to do the improvement. But that we wouldn't do without the commission's blessing.
Okay. So it would be something, you know, there's a lot of discussion about an amphitheater. If that doesn't fall under the budget that we currently have, and someone coming in developing said, "I could provide funding for an amphitheater. This is something that came out of community engagement," then it would be brought before commission for approval.
That's a great example, yes, just like that.
Thank you.
So again, Northwood Road, so as Curry develops, you've got a graphic here. So again, we've had discussions, and it's been part of Mr. Green's plan, to talk about the extension of Northwood Road. So again, you've got the anchor site, you've got the existing Northwood Road reflected in yellow, and then the thought is that that extension would be the area reflected in the green, the red crosshatch there, again, with development on either side of that. And this is just an example of what we will eventually bring to the city commission. Again, don't rely on these stories yet. We're still working through these numbers. But again, you've got, from smallest to largest, you've got an edge sub-district with a maximum height of four stories, a transition to 12, a Core Two with 15 stories, and then a Core One up to what we're recommending 30 stories. So we would have a table like this in our zoning code with a list of incentives. So let's say that somebody wanted to build a 22-story building. They could only build that in the Core One, given the height. You couldn't do more than 15 in the Core Two. So they would have, in essence, a menu of items to choose from in order to achieve that height. So they would start with a base, let's say, of eight, and if they wanted to go to 22, they would simply pick one of these incentives. So we're still trying to finalize the stories, and we'll meet with the applicant to discuss this in more detail. But at the end of the day, we want each of the incentives to be commensurate in value. So in a perfect world, a developer is struggling with what incentive to choose because they're all valued equally. What we don't want is one to be so dominant that all we see is just the same incentive coming over and over. So this is just a sample. I noted as an example, but we'll come back, again, as we go back through the process. So how this would work is, let's say, again, a developer wanted to build a 22-story building in the Core One. He has a base of 12 stories, so he could build that outright. He wants to do another two stories, and let's say that was the weight or the incentive for public parking in Curry Park. He would get an additional two floors. Then he did workforce housing, which would give him another five, and then he did a supermarket or a food store. That would give him the other three. So it works in this fashion, but again, we're going to finalize the numbers, and we're not wedded to the numbers you see here, but this is simply an example of how to achieve that greater height. So with regard to the timetable, we've already begun the comprehensive plan amendment, so these changes will involve a comp plan change. You will see that on March 8. And what we're doing is changing some of the general policies in our mixed-use districts, not just C-Mud, but also N-Mud and B-Mud, particularly as it relates to street vistas. We're going to change the comprehensive plan to take the language of the building height out, and the reason we're doing that is every time we do an amendment to height, because it's in the comp plan, we've got to go back through the state and DEO. We'd rather just confine that to the zoning and land development regulations. So if the commission desires to make a change, we can keep that local, for lack of a better term, and not have to transmit it to the state. And then again, we're going to delete some language in the B-Mud dealing with building typology and height. So you'll see that on March 8. That's the first step in this process. So we'll submit that to the Department of Economic Opportunity. They'll go through their month-and-a-half review. At the same time, we'll be working on our zoning and land development regulations, what I'm discussing today. We'll take that to the, to the planning board, either March or April. And then when we come back for second reading of the comprehensive plan change, we'll also bring the amendments to the zoning code at the same time, so you'll see them in tandem at the same time. So that's kind of our hope. So hopefully, by the summer, we will have this completed. So in summary, the issues, again, we're recommending a 30-story height limit for the Core One District. We'd like to recommend the building sub-districts as reflected to the right. So again, you've got the edge in the green, you've got the transition in the blue, six to 12 stories, the Core Two in the pink of eight to 15 stories, and then the Core One reflected in red. And then thirdly, these are the incentives that we would like to continue to work on, but these are the ones that we would recommend that would allow the developer to move from the base height to the maximum height permitted in each of these four sub-districts. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'll leave it on this slide if you care to discuss that in more detail. But I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. My staff is here also. It's been a great deal of time working on this, so they're here as well.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Green. Questions, Madam President?
Thank you. Two questions. One more on incentives. When it comes to workforce housing, you know, certainly, we welcome workforce housing wherever we can get it throughout the city, but when we're considering that incentive, will there be several options considered for workforce housing? Certainly, waterfront workforce housing is very appealing, but we have neighborhoods throughout that have housing stock that maybe could be improved through, you know, Housing Trust Fund, et cetera. So are we looking purely at creating affordable housing where it sits, or there's options to translate that elsewhere?
Commissioner, like we discussed at our workshop, when we were discussing downtown, I think we'd like to propose something very similar to what we proposed as part of the downtown discussion, with the difference being that, again, I think in this area, there's so much of an impact that this development's going to have on Northwood and the neighborhoods immediately around it. So maybe some of that could be a contribution to a fund or rehabilitation of existing housing stock. So I think certainly, we'd like to look at that over and above what was suggested for the downtown. So I think that's something we do want to include, absolutely.
Great, great. Thank you. And secondly, you know, this district, we have kind of a unique situation in that we have very limited property owners throughout this district. So it's basically Mr. Green, Mr. Kosikoff are the only two potential developers there. And I will say, you know, Mr. Green put a public workshop on for these specific buildings, which was really well-received by the neighbors. And mostly, neighbors have wanted to see development on this property for a very long time. And so, you know, it's not that I disagree with staff's recommendation. I just want to make sure that we're engaging with those development teams. If we set zoning, and it's still not going to be able to be built upon, you know, if it's not going to be executed, then we're just, you know, how many times are we going to go back and reset zoning? Would be my concern. And so I don't have the right answer there. I don't know what the right number is. You know, I know there's a financial equation that goes back in, in the back end of that, but I think that, that's really what my one question is in this whole thing, is, you know, in our communications, is this considered a deal-breaker? You know, is it going to be that we set a limit of 30 stories, and then no development will happen?
Yes. We'll continue to have those discussions. My understanding is that, and I don't want to speak for the developer, but what they've told us is they do not want to start with the tallest building first, the 38-story. So we'll see, but we'll have those discussions with them.
I appreciate that. Again, I don't know what the right number is. I just would be concerned that we're setting a standard. If we're setting a standard that is not going to be met, then, you know, development is still not going to happen. And what the goal of the neighbors is, is to try to get something active there. As you said, it would have a tremendous impact on Northwood Village. So, thank you.
And on that point, it's certainly nice to have development, but we have to keep in mind the canvas of the entire city as we are looking at this. And I don't want to cater to a single development group in one part of our city when that, when the development might be inconsistent with what we're trying to do for our city as a whole. So it's a balance that we're trying to strike here. Yes, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Thank you for the very thorough presentation. My question, and I think it was more on slide 17, when you're talking about staff's recommendation not to include, I think it was the northern section, but to include the southernmost section in the core, I believe, Core One. Can you talk a little bit more about the difference between those? Because I usually like to go and drive and see this for myself, but maybe you can paint a picture here of what the difference is.
Certainly. The transition district that's reflected in the blue was intended to be six and 12 stories. So you've got, again, the Portofino and La Fontana condos here that are 10 stories. So the transition area immediately to the west would also be in that same range, six to 12 stories, under the staff's proposal. The edge district, which is reflected in the green, is three to four. So the thought is, you've got a lot of single-family just on the outside as you start to enter into Northwood. So you want to transition from a taller height and scale down. So that was the thought. Having, you know, whether it's a 30 or 38-story here, you've got a big variation, if you will, in height, from 30 to 38 stories here, transitioning down to three and four stories, literally right next door. So that's why we wanted to see the transition from, let's say, a maximum of four here to 12 to possibly 30. Down on this block, again, this is-
Mr. Green, if I could interrupt just one second. Is that part, is that parcel there that's in blue that you're making the recommendation not to include in Core One, is that part of Jeff Green's proposal?
It is. It is. So under his scheme, with the bookend developments, he would put or place a 38-story building here and a 38-story building down here.
Okay. And I know you're still going to talk about the southernmost point as well, but I guess along this in your answer, you also mentioned in the presentation that staff would like to see the taller buildings in the middle versus the way it's proposed on the outside. If you could address that in your answer, too, that would be helpful.
Yeah. Again, because he owns all of this property, we'd rather see the, let me find it. We'd rather see the taller buildings in the middle and then cascading out. But again, it could be such that all of Core One, in reality, could be a 30-story building. But to have what we call the bookend concept with the taller buildings on the edges, so close to where you have a smaller scale height because you're transitioning into single-family, and while the C-Mud District, again, extends below the properties he owns here, further south, we just think it makes more sense not to have the tall, massive building next to the smaller. And we'd rather see the taller buildings here, you know, if he's going to scale down buildings, start in the middle and scale down as you're transitioning to a smaller height.
And what's on the south side of Pine Street here? What's over here?
I believe you've got, let me see if I go to the arrow. You've got Temple Beth Israel to the south. And again, you've got primarily smaller developments down here. So you've got the temple here, which is actually coming in for designation in front of the commission here shortly. But it's primarily office buildings, generally smaller scale, one to four stories here.
But you're saying it's not up against residential, excuse me, which is what's happening on the north end?
Correct. As you see here, you start to enter in the Northwood. This is the edge district up here. This is the transition district right here. But you can see, you've got single-family here, so we'd rather see that transition to a smaller scale. Now, again, down here, while it's not owned by Mr. Green, certainly with the amendments that we're talking about, this property could redevelop, and then you will see an increase in height there. It's just, it hasn't happened yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, yes, Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this presentation. My question is regarding the building incentives. So essentially, slide 29, but I just wanted to ask, some of the incentives seem like they're finite. Like we, how many food stores do we need, or, you know, how many, how many parking spots do we need? I'm wondering if there is a cap on some of those things. For example, I think some of the, in the examples you've shown, maybe mobility wasn't selected in your one example. And to me, I feel like having added mobility- And to me, I feel like having added mobility really opens up the Curry corridor to the entire city in a different way than some of these other incentives may that are more directed to the people living in that area already, which I don't want to take away from them. But, you know, just what happens, for example, if some of those items are not selected because everybody wants to have a food store or everyone picks curry improvements over the other options? I'm just wondering if it's kind of first come, first served, that some of the incentives will be kind of taken away for the next, the next time? Or how that would work?
You, you're absolutely right, Commissioner. I mean, a lot of this is going to be market-driven. So I suspect that if a, if a food store, grocery store does decide to locate in Seamud, particularly if it's something significantly larger than, you know, 15,000 square feet. If it's a Publix, let's say that's 40,000 to 45,000 square feet, that's pretty much going to dry out the market. So the private market forces are going to dictate such that a second food store is not going to want to come in, so they won't be able to utilize that incentive. But by the same token, we want to create enough incentives that a developer's got a choice. But these are all things that the city desires, whether it be a food store, whether it be mobility options. The mobility one certainly is one that we, we certainly want to push for, just like we're doing downtown. So you'll see a lot more of, of those features, and we're going to lay those out in detail. Again, certainly the extension of the trial would be one that, if, if that could be funded, like we're doing with the Okeechobee Business District. But a lot of this, I think, is going to be driven by the, the private market.
Follow-up? Uh, any other, Commissioner Peduzzi? You gotta do more than just one little finger.
Two?
Right, yeah, no, hand up. Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you speak as to the, um, the benefits of the extending Northwood Road? And the logistics of, of how that would happen?
Certainly. The, the intent really is to provide a link, if you will, no different than what we do in Clematis Street by tying the waterfront to the western edge of, of Clematis. And the thought is that if we have, as the name implies, an anchor site on the west, then what we want to do is create an enjoyable walk, kind of like what we have in Clematis, you know, with a six or seven block area that would connect the anchor site to the park. With the thought being is that, you know, Duane always uses the term, the interesting walk, the five-minute walk. If there's development along this corridor, particularly as you enter the Seamud District, then people may be inclined to visit a restaurant, go to a shop, hang out at the anchor site once it's built, and then take a leisurely stroll into the park. But in order for that to happen, you have to have interesting building facades on either side of the roadway, so people will be willing to take that walk. There's an old adage that once you see two minutes of blank space, then you lose interest. You don't want to walk down that corridor. So really, the intent is to extend the concept of Northwood Road. And then the hope is, like Clematis Street, it becomes a focal point. It becomes a destination for people that want to have dinner maybe somewhere along Northwood Road and then venture into the Curry Park to take advantage of the new improvements that we've got there.
Follow-up, Commissioner?
No, I think you answered it. Thank you.
Okay, Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add to, to Mr. Green's comments. This is something that the neighborhood has asked for for a while, Commissioner. Currently Dixie Highway is the dividing line that goes through the neighborhood. To currently get across Dixie Highway, you would have to come down Northwood Road, head north, go to the crosswalk, cross the street, and then head south over to 23rd Street or pick one of the streets to kind of make the crossways down. And so it's, it's been something that the community has been looking for, for a while. And specifically businesses on Northwood Road, et cetera, because that lack of connectivity right now even stops 312 Northwood Road. The residents there, that's 98% capacity filled, from even crossing the road and going up to Northwood Village. So it is a big dividing line, and having that connectivity would be really important, not only for Curry Park, for development that would happen in Seamud and for Northwood Road and the anchor site.
And this would involve the relocation of the Joel Davis Park, and discussions have already taken place with the former mayor, and he's agreeable to this. You know, the estimated cost, CRA was estimating about $3.4 million to fund this extension. Again, something we can chat about.
Mr. Green, one of your later slides had a list of items that you wanted direction from-
You read my mind, Mayor, because I was going to go there next.
That's scary, for you, not for me. So, uh, let's, uh, you know, go down the list and, and I'll let you ask a question.
So the first issue, again, we're, we're being somewhat permissive with the height in terms of the number of feet by suggesting 403 feet. I know their desire is to have a, a very tall first-floor plate. But we're suggesting 30 stories capped at a height of 403 feet versus the 38 that was proposed by Mr. Green's team.
And, and this is, you know, the, the type of issue where we need to keep the, uh, the totality of the city and the canvas of the city in place. And, and I think this is where staff is going. We don't have any other buildings in our entire city that are taller than 30 stories. And I, I do agree that we should have our tallest buildings in our, in our downtown areas. I would be in favor of the 30-story height limitation here, notwithstanding the desires of the developer. Just my thought. Yeah, Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, again, I'll re- repeat my concerns. It's not that I have an issue with the 30-story height limit. And we have to keep in mind of, not only who owns parcels today, but where parcels could be sold, and there'll be different developers tomorrow. I just want to ensure that when we are creating limits, that it's something that's going to encourage the development. Because key, key, key to the neighborhood, whether it's the current owner now or different owners in the future of land sold, is that we have something that is developable, able to be developed. So that, that's really my only concern, and I think that's simply a conversation that can be had.
Right. And, and again, I'll remind the commissioner, under the existing zoning and land development regulations, the maximum height a developer can achieve in Seamud today is 15 stories. So we're in essence going to be doubling the height for that core district.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Any other, are there any objections, I guess, to, for the sake of the conversation, to limiting it to 30 stories? Commissioner Lambert, Commissioner Peduzzi, Commissioner Fox? Okay. Commissioner Lambert, then Commissioner Peduzzi.
I certainly understand Commissioner Shouf's concerns, and, and I share those concerns. I was at that community meeting, a hu- room with over 100 people there, and 99.9% of them were in favor of Mr. Green moving forward on this project. I, I, and I, and I hear the mayor's concerns, and, and I also have some concern with 38 stories in our city when we don't have that anywhere else. Do you know if, in the presentation that Jeff Green gave, and I don't know if you ha- know it, or maybe Commissioner Shouf, was, were the buildings at 38 stories when he was presenting that?
I, I was at that meeting. It was seven years ago. I don't know if they specified a height.
Oh, I was thinking the meeting that was like a, two years ago, maybe a year. It, it does seem like seven years though with COVID.
I'm sorry, Angela? Yeah, Angela handed me a sheet, I guess that was presented at that meeting. And they're showing a height of 413 feet. Again, we were suggesting just 10 feet less than that. I don't know how many stories this reflects, but it was a height of 413 to the roof. So we're, we're in the ballpark, so to speak.
Thank you.
Commissioner Peduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, the highest building that we currently have is in our downtown, and it's 32, 32 floors?
Trump Plaza was built at 32, I think because of the floor-to-ceiling heights. I think One West Palm is the tallest building, although it's got less floors.
Okay, thank you.
30 stories as opposed to 32.
Uh, Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor. If I may follow up on that, because I think what you're talking about, Mr. Green, is an important distinction because we're talking about stories, which is not a standard measure. It's not like saying something is so many feet high. And so when you're talking about the overall height of the building, now we're talking about just a difference of 10 feet? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
From what they proposed at that two, 2014 meeting in, in Northwood, when they first presented this.
So it's just the difference in how tall we're considering a story?
Yes.
Ceiling heights, floor-to-ceiling heights? Okay, that, that makes more sense. And I think that's probably the, the better way that I could count it. I mean, I don't think that that sounds very insurmountable.
All right, so I will repeat, are there any objections to staff's recommendation? Commissioner Lambert?
Well, to that point though, so is the limitation going to be on stories or is it going to be on height?
We're, we're going to use both. That's typically what we do in our zoning code.
Okay.
So if you had a height limit of 30 stories, what's the number of feet?
It would be 403, which is just 10 feet less than what they showed back in 2014.
So 30 stories or 403 feet? Commissioner Peduzzi?
Thank you. If we were to permit 38 floors, 38 stories, do we know what that height would be? And do we have a comparison of the next, you know, one of the other buildings that might be higher but actually have fewer floors in the downtown area?
Again, I think One West Palm would be the tallest. I don't know what other comparison we could use other than that. And again, I'm not sure in their 38 stories, how many feet that, uh, that translated to. I'm sorry? So Alex is telling me it would be an additional 100 feet at 38 stories.
Just quick, follow it?
Yes.
That additional 100 feet, would that make it the tallest building in, in the city?
Probably would, yes.
Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify what you said, Mr. Green, we do overall height and stories in our zoning code. And so if what's being proposed here, we're looking at what is the tallest overall. Would there be, what would be the issue with keeping your overall total height and changing to have more stories in that overall height? Because I think that is something that plays into the equation of how many residential living units that you can have within the building. So is there a reason that we wouldn't be able to increase the number of stories, but not the overall height?
Again, that's, that's the, the decision of the commission. We, we were factoring a 12 and a half floor-to-ceiling height. They could certainly do less and get more floors and stay under that same height. If the commission prefers to do that, they can do that. We have historically in the downtown and outside of downtown, always done a combination of, of both stories and height. And all the districts you see here, you know, each, each have, I'm just showing the stories here, but they also have a corresponding height that, that is associated with each.
So is there a reason that, that staff would recommend that? I mean, obviously there has to be a minimum. We can't have, you know, heights of six feet. You need ceilings and, you know, ceiling heights to be able to make dwelling units livable. But i- is there a reason that, that staff wouldn't support having more stories, but still the same overall height? Like what would be the rationale?
We, we had that internal discussion about possibly going that route. And then the decision was made to leave it the same. But again, again, the way we've done it with both stories and height, if the commission desires just to not regulate it with stories and simply height, that, that's your preference. We could do it either way.
I, I guess I would say it's, it has to be regulated in some way because there is some minimum standard. And I don't know what that is. And I know we're, we're discussing in a work session, and perhaps it, it takes more internal discussion and then, you know, revisiting. But certainly, I think if what we're concerned about is overall height, you know, I think that there's some ways to work that in between, that it may be a, a doable development without compromising.
Well, I would be in favor of a height, and, and I don't know how it, it reaches in the code, but, um, the greater of, or the lesser of, I guess, whatever the 403 feet or whatever it is, whatever the maximum height is we have downtown, that would be the maximum. However many stories that equates to, depending upon the particular site plan, is okay. But under, I would be, the regulation should be such that there would not be any building out of our downtown that's taller than a downtown, the tallest building downtown. And however many stories that may equate to, I guess, depends upon the developer and what they're putting up. But at the end of the day, I wouldn't want the building at any part of our city to be taller than the tallest building downtown.
Yeah, Commissioner, where it gets a little challenging, as I'm going back to the incentive table that I showed, that we typically show that by stories. So we would have to convert this to feet, which becomes a little challenging. Because again, the incentive has always been based on the number of stories, so.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Mr. Green, would it be, would it be able to be established within this district what the, the minimum story height would be? And then you could still keep your stories, but stories would be defined as per the minimum of whatever the, the foot measurement would be?
Yes, I actually had it on this slide, and I took it out because I thought it would be too confusing. But with each of these heights, I had a six, an eight, a 10, and a 12. And then I had a corresponding building height with that. Again, I just took it out here and just showed the minimum and the maximum. But we have that, so it's not always a one-for-one. So the Edge, for instance, taller floor-to-ceiling heights than maybe over here. But we can work on that, bring that back.
I think if, if one particular building defined a story as 15 feet and the other building defined it as 12 feet or whatever it ended up being, then it would be just whatever the, that standard unit of measure would be. I leave it to, you know, administration and staff.
We, we can work on that. That's doable.
Thanks.
Commissioner Peduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. I would think that the objection to these tall buildings is more related to their overall height as opposed to the number of stories. So I would be for, you know, just setting a maximum height not to exceed, you know, the tallest building downtown and let the developer work within the code to determine, you know, how, how many floors that he can fit or how many floors he wants to fit in, into that maximum height.
All right. Does that give you direction or does it confuse you further?
No, it does, Mr. Mayor. So we can move forward from that. The second item is, is the sub-district map that you see here. This would be staff's recommendation as to how we would like to move forward. Again, keeping this area here as a transition and then adding this from a Core Two to a Core One.
I'm comfortable with that. I don't know how commissioners feel. Is there any objection to-
No objection.
The recommendation? Okay.
And, and then lastly, the building incentives, these are what we, we've come up with. If there are any others that you would like staff to consider, certainly we are amenable to adding to this, or if there are any here that you prefer, we do not offer as an incentive. But these are the, the ones we're considering at this point.
Just clarification, the workforce housing incentive would be similar to the, what we discussed at the workshop a couple of weeks ago, correct?
Correct, Mayor. So the thought is that we could offer the incentive that if a, um, if it's built as part of a residential development, it could be built within the project. It could be built off-site. I think the difference than, from downtown is that in, when we offered the off-site suggestion for downtown, we said it had to stay into the downtown. Here, I think we would like to expand that to maybe allow for improvements to existing housing stock, let's say in Northwood outside of the Seamud. If it's in close proximity, and maybe what we do is we establish a range within two or three miles of any corner of, of Seamud. And that could, that could be either an improvement to housing stock outside of Seamud, within Seamud, or a contribution to a trust fund that could go to the rehabilitation of units outside that would address workforce housing.
Now, here is a concern when it comes to workforce slash affordable housing, particularly if you're talking about multi-unit. I do not want to have any, um, areas that are inundated with this housing, anywhere in our city. I don't want a slum, if you will, and I hate to use that word, where you almost just have a, an area that's all workforce slash affordable housing, separate from marketplace. So I don't know what kind of protections we could put in place, particularly if we're talking about having workforce housing in the existing neighborhoods. But that would be of significant concern to me.
Okay.
You, you see where I'm going with that?
I do, I do.
I mean, if we're talking about workforce housing downtown, because of the price of land, that's not as much of a problem. But if you get outside of downtown where land prices may not be as expensive as it is in downtown, then there, there's a risk that you'd just be dumping a bunch of units into a certain portion of the neighborhood and what comes with that. and what comes with that. Uh, Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and as it pertains to workforce housing in this particular site, speaking as the District One Commissioner, what's keenly important to me is that the development within this area directly benefits the area outside of it. Uh, you know, we certainly have great opportunities, and we've, we've taken advantage of those to have workforce housing downtown and have affordability, and I certainly hear the mayor's concern, and that's not, I wanna have mixed-income areas for, uh, housing within our city. I think if, if at all possible, wh- what I would prefer to see is incentives for improvements to the single-family homes in some way, shape, or form as the option for affordability, because we have a lot of really great existing housing stock, and I think it would, um, solve a lot of the issue that, that the mayor's concerned about, in that we're not concentrating, uh, density in any one area. It's just used to, to bring up the entire area, but it's keenly important, this area has sat vacant for so long that the development that is done here is directly seen as a benefit to the neighborhood, and so, to the extent that we can, um, make sure that, that it does, eh, affect directly, and make sure that it is all-encompassing. You know, uh, typically, if you would go a couple of miles from any corner, you won't hit neighborhoods west of Broadway, which are some of the, the, the most needed areas to, to be looked at. So, I understand it's not an easy task, and, and workforce housing isn't really the charge typically on development services, and I know it takes a lot of departments to work together, but if we could find a way, we've just been waiting for so long for improvements to be made here, and I want neighbors to feel how these improvements have directly impacted them to the most extent that they can. Thank you.
I understand.
Uh, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, and thanks for asking about these incentives here. It looks like you and staff have put together a great list of incentives, and I've heard many of these issues needing to be addressed in this community, and so I just started to think about, you know, what are some of the other issues that I've continued to hear over the years, and also took into consideration, previously, when you were answering Commissioner Peduzzi's question about Northwood Road and it becoming, uh, similar to the kind of feel of Clematis Street and, and some of the issues that we just have downtown with, specifically related to maintenance and security. And I know that both downtown and this area are covered by CRA dollars, but downtown also has a DDA that supports the businesses, that supports security, maintenance issues with the park or with the waterfront, and I was just wondering, similarly to how we have payment for mobility options, have we ever considered payment into a fund that could fund those sorts of projects or ongoing maintenance needs that will happen once we redevelop and, and bring more people to this area?
We, we certainly can have that discussion with our legal department to see what we can and can't do, and there's a fine line between what is known as an exaction, where you're extorting something from a developer that isn't tied to the development, but certainly as part of the approval, you know, if something is built along that Northwood Road extension, I believe it's within the parameters of the commission to require that the developer maintain that portion in front of, you know, his or her building. Um, so that's something we can certainly look at, but certainly, we'll have that discussion with Ms. Urcheck and see what we can and can't do.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I know I have a lot of input on this topic. It's very near and dear to my heart. I just wanna point out to the Commissioner's point that this is within the CRA. So, any development that's made here, this will be tax dollars that go on the books and are collected within the CRA, which is really, really important, um, specifically to the Northwood Pleasant City CRA, which encompasses this, because the funding in the downtown CRA is significantly larger, and so, any dollars that would potentially come out of buildings that would come out of the ground would be captured in the CRA and would be really important in this area.
Any other, uh, comments? Any other additions, uh, or deletions from the list of incentives? Are we comfortable with this list as currently exists? Any objections? I don't see any, so I think we're, it's a good starting point.
Thank you very much for your input. This is very helpful. So, we'll move forward. Again, you'll see the comp plan amendments on March eighth. We'll continue working on the zoning and land development regulations. We didn't get the, into issues of setbacks and all the others, it's the, the detail that we'll continue to work out internally with the, um, the applicant's proposals and, uh, and move forward, but you'll, you'll be seeing this in the near future.
Can we, um, and I know it's in the statute, but can we put deadlines on getting a project done once it's approved? And that's more a rhetorical question than anything else, but, uh, it would be nice that if we go through this exercise, and we're having these conversations with a developer, that something get done sooner rather than later, but-
Mayor, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that as a very big concern on my part.
Okay.
Um, you know, we're gonna go through these series of changes. We would love to see something built. What's been killing the city, and we've had this discussion with our legislative lobbyists, um, you know, these extensions that are granted by the governor, you know, sometimes they don't even pertain to anything that's going on here, whether it's, you know, mosquitoes in the Everglades or a fire in the Panhandle.
Yeah.
We have a project downtown that was vested-approved in two thousand and seven, and it still has a valid development order, um, because they've been smartly utilizing every affordable extension possible. So, we have it to use it or lose it, but when it gets to the governor's-
Yeah.
-extensions, we can't control that, so, but it's a concern we have.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Green, very much, and, uh-
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing more.